Order the Port Orchard City Council, uh, special meeting on March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Thank you, Brandy, for bringing the tape recorder over. And please scan and join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So John is a guest. Can you talk for us to make sure that I'm loud enough that the other council members can hear you?
Uh, I can certainly hear you.
They can't hear you, so I'll turn your volume up a little more.
I have a lot of volume.
No.
Got a mic next to it. See if a mic works.
Let me see if I, if I bring a mic over to her, I'm just worried about the feedback.
It might, it might happen, but try it.
We're gonna try a mic here.
Just one. Just one.
There's, there's Mark. Yeah.
Here, do you want to switch it out? For some reason, microphone number two has a lot of feedback. I don't know why.
We don't have any public, so.
One more option.
How, how about that one? John, can you talk again?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
A bit closer to you.
Want to get one more, try more time here. We're just moving the microphone around. Go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me now? Usually what my screen does is bring up whoever's talking.
It does, and that's what it did, do you, for you right now?
Is that microphone on?
Says it is. Are you picking it up back there?
Testing, one, two, three, four.
Test, test into the mic.
Test, test. Yeah, I've got, I've got it on the mic. I'm not. Go ahead, John, one more time.
Testing, one, two, three, four.
There we go. That's, that's, that's better. We can hear you a little bit, and I might have to repeat things. Just a little bit.
I'll break it up.
Okay. We're good. All right. So.
I can try to use sign, sign language.
We can use sign language, and I might have to repeat what you guys say if you, if you, uh, when it comes time to it, to do it, so. Um, so, just, I've got just some, there isn't anybody in the public here, but, uh, per the governor's order, older adults and individuals, individuals with underlying medical conditions are encouraged not to attend this meeting, including employees. Uh, and we are practicing social distancing here this evening, so that's why I'm out here in the audience and for council members up at the dais. So with that, uh, we are to, uh, the approval of the agenda. Are there any motions to amend the agenda? Councilmember Kachardi?
God, I would like to move item number five to item number one tonight.
Okay. Is there a second? I have a second by councilmember Deener. So that moves item number five to item number one. Any just further discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, aye, the agenda has been amended. Any other amendments to this evening's agenda?
No, Mayor, I'd move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second by councilmember Lucarelli. Motion by councilmember Kachardi to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved for this evening. So we are to our first, to our citizen comment period. We have no one from the public here this evening. We will move on to our first, uh, action item of this evening. Uh, adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, sections two point oh four, point oh one oh, two point oh four, point one six oh, two point oh four, point two one oh, adopting Port Orchard Municipal, Municipal Code, two point oh four, point oh four five, uh, pertaining to remote meeting policy. Okay, with that, um, find my agenda, if there's a staff report. Okay, on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, the mayor issued a proclamation. Am I on the right one?
No.
Nope, I am not. I can go back to the agenda. How about item five? All right. With the start, with the current, uh, health advisories taking place, questions arose as to who would have the authority to club, close public facilities? Is this, isn't it right either?
It's number five.
It is number five.
Page fif, page fifteen.
Yeah, I'm on page fifteen, okay. The staff report isn't right, though.
About page fifteen.
This has to, okay, so here we go. Um, anyway, the mayor, mayor staff and legal counsel have been working on updating Port Orchard Municipal Code to address, uh, this issue. The proposed ordinance would memorialize in Port Orchard Municipal Code. Chapters two point oh four, the mayor's authority to which remote attendance by council members and staff via video conferencing and the standards by which the authority would exist. So that was a little mixed up there. I think we've got two, part of two staff reports in one there. I hope we completely understood that. So this is pertaining to the remote meeting policy only.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, sections two point oh four, oh one oh, two point oh four, one sixty, two point oh four, two ten, adopting Port Orchard Municipal Code, two point oh four, oh four five, pertaining to remote meeting policy as presented.
Second.
Second by councilmember Lucarelli. The motion was by councilmember Deener. Any discussions of this remote meeting policy? Yes, councilmember Kachardi.
Under, under the circumstance tonight, I think the, um, the material change here is seen in two dot zero four dot zero four five, and maybe we read that into the record, because I think that's the, the meat of this change.
Absolutely. So, uh, we, uh, one, the, the, yes. Okay, so as it relates to remote attendance, the mayor, or in his, the mayor's absence, the mayor pro tem may approve a council member or employee's appearance at a regular or work-study meeting via video conferencing or telephone remote attendance under the following circumstances. When the action or measure to be voted on cannot be delayed, but rather requires an immediate action or remedy, when the remote attendance is for the benefit of the city and not for the benefit of the individual council member in the event of a fire, a flood, or earthquake, or an emergency related to public health and safety. And that's what we're dealing with, uh, in our community and throughout our nation, uh, at this time.
Thank you.
So.
Yes, council-
I want to talk sometime.
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Yeah, talk. Um, and I'm in support of this, but I do have a question. And whether it's for Charlotte, I'm, I'm not sure who the question belongs to. But I want to make sure that if we have a situation where we have, um, we need a super majority or we need a majority, and people are out of town ill or whatever and cannot attend a council meeting, and the mayor needs to have someone attend, um, remotely, I want to make sure that the mayor, um, requests, puts out the request to all the council members that are not in attendance to attend the remote, remotely. I, I, what I'm trying to say is I don't want our mayor in a position where he can handpick who attends the meeting and votes.
That, that's a fair point, and maybe that, that opportunity, if, if one, if it's presented to one, it needs to be presented to all. And so Charlotte, how would you, I know you, we're asking you to practice law on the fly here. Um, how would you, you have some recommended language that we would want to consider to address that concern? Or maybe we bring this, we adopt this and bring it back for, uh, amendment next week? So, but we at least would have a policy, because I think likely next week, we're all going to be here or not here. Uh, Brandy and I will be here, and that'll be, that'll be about it.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Um, my recommendation would be to have you issue some, or create some sort of policy, one sheet, that explains how you will be interpreting this section, two point oh four, oh five, four five, that would be consistent with, uh, the council members' concerns, uh, that they were, you know, in the event this occurs, I will make sure and, and offer this to everyone who had indicated that, that they would not be attending a particular meeting. Um, so I, I think that we can adopt this, and then we can take that sort of policy interpretation step tomorrow.
Okay.
Would the policy be a show of resolution?
Hold, hold, hold on a second here. Um, Brandy's question is, would that be in the form of a resolution? Or is that just a management policy? And then Mr. Clausen has a question after that. Charlotte?
That would be a, a management policy or an interpretation, uh, so it would require no council action.
Okay. Mr. Clausen?
Yes, my concern would be that if, um, at some point when Mayor Johnson retires and we get a new mayor, will that new mayor be able to change that provision at will?
As a policy issue?
A policy change.
It's a policy change, yeah. I, I think I'd be more comfortable, because not all mayors are created equal, and I know I'm the perfect mayor. At least, I think so. Uh, and, uh, he, uh, we adopt this this evening and then possibly bring it back next week with a, a line or two, with that, whatever that policy is in the, in the, in this, is this an ordinance? This is whatever this is. In this ordinance. Yeah, so we, we maybe amend it next week, just so that we have something in place that allows us next week to conduct business this way. Um, but this is a work in progress, I think.
I can put that together.
Okay. Did you kind of capture the intent there?
I did.
I think every, I, I think in reality, if we're gonna offer this, we're gonna offer it to all. Um, and that's, that's the workaround, and if you're not able to attend, then it's no different than missing any other council meeting.
Well, and then item B, it can't be done for the benefit of an individual council member, anyway.
Correct.
It's an exclusion, so.
Yeah. And that's just a-
Could you repeat that?
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Could you repeat that? I wasn't able to hear whoever was speaking.
That was Sean, and what was, well, go ahead, Sean.
I just said that, as it reads right now, that this cannot occur if it's for the benefit of an individual council member.
Yeah, so did you catch that this time, John?
I did.
Okay. And, and so that, that is the intent, is that, uh, I hope two weeks, but for sure, three to six months from now, when we're in normal times, that, um, somebody isn't going on vacation saying, I want to be able to participate via video. That isn't, that isn't the intent of this, is, is for extraordinary circumstances, so. Yes, councilmember Chang?
As a sort of, um, friendly amendment, you may want to make the first sentence of where it says council member or employee be plural, because there it seems to be stating that it would be only for one council member, a council member. So maybe you want to put S in parentheses, so it could be more than one.
So did you catch that, Charlotte? That, the, okay. It's a good catch, too. We've, we've done a lot of this on the fly here in the last few days. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to, to adopt, uh-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it looks like the ordinances didn't get assigned an ordinance number. Um, I don't know if Brandy has that on the fly.
Do you have that ordinance number? Doesn't appear-
We do that after.
We do after the fact, I'm told.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so it appears we have an ordinance adopting a, uh, pertaining to a remote meeting policy. Uh, there's been some, uh, offers of some edits that the attorney is going to capture. We're like, we're likely to adopt this now and then bring it back again next week uh, to our, our next council meeting, which will likely be remotely conducted. So further discussion of the item before us? Okay? And likely, the only four that are voting on this are the four in attendance, because we don't have this policy in place, but we have a quorum. And then, uh, with three extensions that, uh, are on video right now, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Passes unanimously. And, yes, sir.
Just to go back on a comment, depending on what happens over the next week, I don't know that those little edits would be the highest of priority.
Yeah.
Depending on what happens. So if it didn't occur the next council meeting, I think we're okay with this as presented.
But we're working towards that.
Correct.
So councilmember Clausen?
Question for the attorney, this ordinance that you folks just passed has an effective date five days after posting and publication. With that provision, are we able to vote tonight remotely? Or those of us that are watching you get to just sit and listen?
You're definitely participating.
But not voting?
I don't know.
That's a good question. I apologize for not catching that. I, I think you can vote on the remaining items. Um, I can quickly pull together something. Let's see.
It's a good, it's a good catch. Well, I guess, let's cross that bridge when we have a, a split vote.
Oh, my God. Come on, John.
Then I guess we'll have to get it clarified.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have a problem. These, we've got some pretty, uh, non-controversial things here this evening, so. It was more, more importantly, I'm, I'm glad that the three of you are participating in the meeting this evening.
I, I would follow up, though, with what John said. That probably would be good, just for good practice, uh, not to vote tonight. To go ahead and participate verbally, that would be all right.
Your thoughts, Beck?
Yeah, I'm fine unless they vote the way I don't want them to.
Okay.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Duly noted. So, all right, we're back to, uh, item two now, um, which is a motion ratifying a proclamation declaring a local emergency. And, uh, bear with me a moment here, I'm multitasking on my screen. And, uh, I guess I'll read this since I'm in, everybody can hear me versus Charlotte, it says it's Charlotte. Uh, and so, but, uh, on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, the mayor issued a proclamation of emergency for the city of Port Orchard due to the spread of the novel coronavirus known as COVID nineteen pursuant to RCW thirty-five A, point three four, point one four oh, RCW thirty-eight, point five two, point oh seven oh two, and RCW thirty-nine, oh four, point two eight oh. The proclamation authorizes department directors at the direction of the mayor to take necessary actions, actions necessary to mitigate and continue the operation, including modification of work schedules, reassignment of personnel, and to waive the competitive bidding and the public notice requirements for the procurement of goods and services necessary to prepare for, and prevent and respond to this emergency. The mayor will report to the council throughout the emergency as to the measures taken to protect public health, safety, and welfare. All contracts executed pursuant to this proclamation will be submitted to the council at the, at the earliest practical time. The mayor seeks the council's ratification of the proclamation by the, by the motion of the council. And primarily, there are federal, um, disaster relief. I don't know that, that our, uh, needs will meet those thresholds, but if we don't take this action, then we miss the opportunity to, uh, participate and potentially benefit from those federal aid programs. And, uh, what I, what I heard today at the Department Emergency Management meeting is we've got to start tracking our revenue, or excuse me, our expenses incurred, if we have any, and likely, if we have, uh, revenue losses, we would want to track that also, so. Um, with that, is there a motion? Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to approve of and ratify the mayor's proclamation of local emergency pursuant to RCW thirty-eight point five two, point zero seven zero.
Second. Motion by councilmember Lucarelli and a count, second by councilmember Deener. Is there, are there any questions, uh, by any of the council members, uh, in present or in, online?
Uh, my only comment would be on the personal policy proposed amendment, uh, that we might want to change the title, which says four point four unusual weather conditions, and then-
Okay, we're, we're not to that one yet? There's another, there's, that's a separate item, and I already, and that's already been done, and it was in your email. So, but, uh, we'll get to that one in just a moment. We're just not quite there yet. So we're dealing with the, uh, emergency declaration at this time. Okay? Hearing no further comments, all in favor of approving or ratifying the emergency declaration, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, hearing none, and, uh, thank you for your votes. Okay, so we are to item three, which I think is what the item that, uh, councilmember Rosa Pepe, he was speaking to, I believe, is the, um, amended personnel policy. And you're spot on, uh, councilmember Rosa Pepe, today, earlier today, I emailed out an updated version of this. The text in the body in the bottom of it is exactly the same, but the top reads, instead of just unusual weather conditions, it reads unusual weather conditions, natural disaster, comma, national disasters, or other states of emergency, uh, which is more appropriate. So, does that satisfy your, your concern?
It is. I have to check my email more often.
Okay, no problem. I also emailed you another policy that I've instituted the, the prior one already. I intend to institute another one tomorrow morning. I laid them on the dais for the four council members in attendance, and I emailed them to, uh, to every, to everyone else. And the major, and this has, is a pandemic of public health, emergency, response, recovery, and policy. And the, the major points, uh, under B, number one, employees who have communal illnesses are, or, or are experiencing flu-like symptoms, uh, that, as then identified by applicable health authorities, are prohibited from coming to work and, and are encouraged to consult a physician. The second, number two, in the second sentence, unless otherwise prohibited by law, the employee shall be required to utilize accrued leave if any. So, and, uh, it's just giving me the authority basically to send people home. I've, and I've had instances here in this past week where people don't want to go home, a, a, and, uh, that's not acceptable. And skipping to number seven on the back, at the discretion of the mayor, or designate the city may alter its business practice hours of, of business. And then in A, implementing temporary emergency procedures to minimize in-person contact between employees. Uh, an example of this currently, our Public Works Department are alter, are staggering their start time so that all twenty of those guys don't show up at the same time, uh, to that office space. Uh, and, and so we're staggering start times, so we have fewer people coming in contact with each other. Um, you know, potential B, reduction, uh, reduced reception and front counter services may need, may need to be appropriate. And then C, partial work from home schedules. Some staff may be, may be permitted or assigned to perform work from home, uh, from work from home when it is in the best interest of the city for them to do so. And what my concern here is, the, your management and exempt employees, I can easily let them work from home. When you get your hourly employees, I don't want any perception that I'm picking favorites by allowing this employee or that employee to work from, from home. These things will be done based on the needs of the city. If I need, if this continues to progress and I need to quarantine my person that processes payroll at home, we may, and so that we can assure that payroll is getting processed. And, uh, us making payroll, uh, you know, processing our claims so that we can pay our vendors, so they can pay their employees our, our, of paramount importance to me. And, uh, so that I, uh, just, I have an obligation to report policy changes to you, and so I'm adding this one to it, and, and I'm sorry it's such short notice, but these are, um, interesting times, to say the least. Questions for me? Councilmember Chang?
Do most staff have telecommuting agreements, or is that something that's going to be worked on? Okay.
I have nothing. This is, everything you're seeing tonight is all things that we should probably have in place, and were really an afterthought until, um, here the last week or so. And it's really a front of mind, and, and, uh, credit to, uh, our attorney Charlotte and our, uh, HR coordinator, Debbie Lund, they've been, I haven't crafted any of this stuff, and we bring forth examples from other cities and, and what they're doing. So, um, other questions from online? Okay, hearing none. Those, there was no need for a vote on that. I was just reporting these personnel policies, uh, in a timely mashen, fashion, sorry. And we are to item four. And, uh, this is, um, so, uh, with the current, uh, health advisory taking place, uh, questions arose, who has the authority to suspend disconnect, authority to suspend disconnection of waters, water and sewer services, and to waive, uh, turnoff fees? Uh, mayor, staff, and legal counsel have been working on updating the Port Orchard Municipal Code to address this issue. The proposed ordinance would delegate authority to disconnect water services, water and sewer services, and to turn off, waive turnoff fees under emergency conditions set out in Port Orchard Municipal, Municipal Code thirteen point oh four, point oh five oh. And, uh, long and the short today was turnoff day. We found other things to do. Um, the, uh, I think during, I've already seen a policy from Puget Sound Energy that during this pandemic event, they will not be disconnecting customers' utilities. Um, doesn't mean that our customers aren't going to have to pay these utilities, but people are up, right now are being laid off and losing their jobs, and, and we should not be turning off anybody's, uh, water service, uh, you know, in, for, for a period of time while this emergency is underway. So, um, that is my report on this matter. Councilmember Deener?
So, as I read this, there's no, uh, end date to this. So it's basically-
It coincides with the, uh, emerg, uh, it would only, coincides with the emergency action, which is the declaration that I passed, which is for ninety days, but could be extended.
Okay.
So it, it, it correlates to an emergency action, which is that proclamation that you just ratified just a few minutes ago.
Okay. And I guess going to the, you know, our preferred end state here, um, when do we know that it's no longer a, um, an issue? When do we, when will, will there be a declaration by the governor, for example, that there are no longer emergency measures needed? How does it end? What, what's that proclamation look like? Do we know?
Change is hourly. I, I wish I had an answer for you. I don't.
Okay.
I've made a ninety-day proclamation. I'd like to say it's over as soon as it's over. And Charlotte, is there, is there a process typically for, um, ending an emergency action?
There is. Uh, we can expect at the ultimate conclusion of all this that the governor would issue, uh, something comparable to a, a declaration that the state of emergency has ceased, and we would prepare for you something similar.
That answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I was curious about that. Thank you.
I hope that's soon.
Yeah.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Let me get back up there.
Yeah, I got back up. I have a question I was gonna ask after the motion was made.
Okay. Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt an ordinance ratifying suspension of utility shut-off and amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, section thirteen point zero four, point zero five zero, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Lucarelli, a second by councilmember Deener. Further discussion? Mr. Kachardi, do you have a comment or statement?
Yeah, I do. And under section thirteen dot oh four dot oh five oh, what we're changing for B, for Bravo, is basically who's granted the authority? Is we're calling out the city treasurer? Is that a improper term?
Yeah, it is X, yes. That is a good catch. Um, so it's a treasurer, treasurer is actually, would it be the finance director?
Right.
Does that be correct? Is scribbled there?
The city treasurer is referenced throughout the chapter, so I think it's, it can be used interchangeably.
Okay.
We can do a cleanup at some point with that, but-
That whole ordinance appears needs to be cleaned up.
It's, it's not the ordinance, it's your existing code.
Existing code.
Versus city treasurer, yeah.
Yeah, and we, when we became a code city, a couple of years ago, we, uh, we thought we caught all that kind of stuff, because we, that's when we designated it, because we, by being a second-class city, we had to have a treasurer.
Does this cause any grief with what we're trying to do right now?
It will not cause any grief, yeah.
Attorney says not. But it's used, the two terms are used interchangeably.
Correct.
That's what I heard. So, but good catch. Other questions? Councilmember Deener?
So, um, what about the employee who may have a compromised immune system or who may be, um, whose parents may live with them at home and are at-risk population?
Does that pertain to this utility shut-off ordinance?
Oh, sorry, it does not.
Okay. So, okay, you're not the first one tonight.
Yeah.
Things are a little disconnected. Um, so we're dealing with the, uh, the ability not to turn off, uh, sewer and water service at the moment? All right, further question? Any questions online about this matter? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of passing an ordinance that, uh, ratifying the suspension of utility shut-offs and amending Port Orchard Municipal Code thirteen point oh four, point oh five oh. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We are to, uh, our last business item, appeal of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, sections two point five oh, point one- Code Section 2.50.10010 and adopting Port Orchard Municipal Code 2.50.020 pertaining hours of operation and closure of city facilities. And bear with me while I jump around here. Okay, with the current health advisories taking place, questions arose, who would have the authority to close public facilities? Facilities are closed, the city action needs to be taken. How should staff and officials continue to work? The mayor, staff, and legal counsel have been working on updating Port Orchard Municipal Code to address this issue. The proposed ordinance would memorialize in Port Orchard Municipal Code 2.04, the mayor's authority to authorize remote attendance by council. This, this is the two that got mixed up. Sorry. This has to do with my ability to close City Hall. I have no such authority. City Council sets the hours of operation of City Hall, and let's just jump down into the body of this code. And in Section 1 of this, the hours of City Hall and other facilities shall be open to the public beginning at 8:00 a.m. through 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, except for legal holidays. Or the business of city, the city office in each department whose office is located in the city within City Hall, or any other city facility shall be open to the public during these established hours. The new Section 2.50.020, City Hall closure, the mayor or designee has the authority to deviate from the business hours set in this, this chapter, to close all offices and departments when the following circumstances arise. Conditions warrant, A, conditions warrant a temporary change or closure to preserve employee safety, protect the public or protect public property, or in the event of an emergency is provided in Port Orchard Municipal Code 2.80.210. Sorry about the confusion there in the staff report, but hopefully that makes sense. Councilmember Chang?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Sections 2.50.010 and adopting Port Orchard Municipal Code 2.50.0.020 pertaining to hours of operation and closure of city facilities as presented.
Second. Second by Councilmember Deener. Just came to light as we worked through this that I really didn't have the authority, even in a Sino event, to close City Hall without calling a special council meeting. I've already taken some emergency action to close our active club because of social gathering. And so I just want, you know, I think we need to be able to react in these emergencies, and that's really what this, the amendment here is about. So any questions or comments?
Just mayor, there's a typo in that.
Okay, whereabouts?
The first, the first sentence under 2.50.020. The mayor has designated has the authority to deviate from the business hours set in this, it says hits.
Oh, yeah, this, you're right. Should be this.
You read it correctly.
So you got that, Brandy?
Yeah.
Yep, she corrected it. Brandy corrected that. Thank you for catching that. Other comments or questions? Okay, you'd be voting on an ordinance to amend our code to pertaining to the hours of operation and closure of city facilities. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. So that is all of our business items. I just have a few things I would, I think that are, next week, I'm trying to have a very light agenda. Obviously, the typical consent agenda with the approval of vouchers and electronic payments. If the world continues the way that it is today, we have the ability to conduct this meeting electronically. Brandy and I, and possibly Michelle or someone she designates operating the video equipment will be here to satisfy the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, Open Public Meetings Act. There is no need for any of you to be here. I don't think we're gonna do any, I'm not gonna put anything on this agenda that's controversial at all, that would generate the need for public to want to come and comment. They're still welcome. You're still welcome here, but you're also welcome to participate via this, these electronic means. Things that I have on the agenda, had, one I had on the agenda, we were gonna talk about building inspector position. I'm gonna delay that. I am, I'm very concerned about the economy and the impacts it's gonna have. I know we need this position, but I think we just need to hit the pause button here, even if it's just a few weeks. I had somebody give notice to in Public Works. We were already looking at that position and how it potentially, and we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow about it, matter of fact. It really has been our procurement and contracting person, that isn't what the job title is. We need to look at that, but we're gonna go through a methodical process about that. And I'm just, once again, gonna hit the pause button on any hirings right now, you know, so we're gonna be, I guess, very purposeful. We do, I'll talk to Mr. Bond whether or not we're still gonna have the rezoning of a piece of property on the agenda, and questioning whether we need to, but there might be a reason we have to for, as far as a process. We need to approve a resolution for the fees associated with the cleanup. That's on the agenda, spring and fall cleanup, so that we can have that without, I don't know why, I don't know why we have an audit finding, but at least we caught it, not the auditors, that we don't have the authority to do that. And we have on there also the contract with Kitsap Community Resources for the affordable housing dollars, that if that contract's ready, we should bring that forward so that we can deploy those dollars, because they're probably needed more than ever right now. The last would be if, I've selected a firm for our public relations or public information officer firm, and I sure wish I would have had him this last week, but we've made do. And if you know Ryan Hader of Hader Communications, we're working on a contract with him, it's a local individual. He was the only person that submitted a proposal. And so we've, he has, his contract's been emailed to him. We're gonna probably video conference some direction to him on that, and I'm hopeful that we can get that buttoned up by the end of the week, so I can bring it to you next week, so he can start helping us with our communications pieces of, with everything that's going on. So we're, if you haven't seen, we've got an entire page dedicated to the virus on our webpage, and it's, we're kind of, there's a lot going on there with that. So, Community Service Day has been postponed until further notice. And just outside agencies, today I was at an emergency public health board meeting at nine o'clock this morning. By the time I got to the office, the data that I'm about to give you was already outdated, but there were 904 cases and 48 deaths in our state, and it was, by the time I got back to the office, it was already 50 deaths. So there are 30 employees, roughly one-third of the staff of the Health District is working on the coronavirus issue, and all of the other tasks are being set aside. To date, we, the Health District has expended $175,000 in staff hours dealing with this, and we are in the very, very beginning, I assure you. You need to, you know, we all need to take personal responsibility. If you're sick, stay home and isolate. It just has to happen.
Circling back to my earlier question.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
If you have employees that are not comfortable being here because of maybe they're compromised or have the potential to be, or they have parents that live with them.
Dealt with that today. And I have, you normally have to, absolutely, you, you're, you need to stay home if you feel you're not safe being here, you know, and...
But able to work from home, if?
Not, no. Not, I've got a policy here, if you're an hourly employee, I don't have any provisions for that, but you are welcome not to come to work. You have sick leave, and normally you have to schedule your vacation, and I've lifted that restriction. You are, any leave you have, you're welcome to use, and for any reason, and there are really no questions asked if you're not comfortable coming to work. But I don't, we don't have, we're not equipped for people to work remotely, and I don't have enough, you know, so much of our work, and we're developing electronic, you know, electronic records policies, we're paper. I don't have, I mean, you just can't do it from home. There's very little I can have you do from home. And so there are some exceptions. Our IT manager, who is someone that would...
Can figure it out?
Could, I couldn't live without him, and he's quarantined at home and working from home because that's in our best interest, and I can assure you. And, you know, I couldn't be taking other steps with payroll and others, as, you know, it's just reacting, you know. I, we, all directors gave me their critical functions, you know, and we have contingency plans that we're developing for this, and we're just working through it every day. So that's what I can offer. So we may be asked to help staff the Emergency Operations Center. That was, you know, if the folks at Department of Emergency Management get sick, CENTCOM and DEM and our police department, we're all working through how we're, I know our chief talked to me today on how we're gonna work with our neighbors and neighboring police departments as this rolls through, and many of us likely get ill. And we need police protection to respond to calls. Kitsap County received a grant for $700,000 to sign that contract in the last day or two from Commerce, I believe it was a state program, and it's for isolation centers, so they're setting up tents for folks that can't isolate because there are a number of people in their household or they're homeless and other factors that we haven't identified out there. So that's what I have in my report, and, you know, I wish these were different times that we're reacting and dealing with it as quickly and professionally as we can. I've, you know, unless I hear differently from you guys, I feel very strongly, as does Mayor Erickson, that we're here to serve the public, that we should keep our doors open if we can, and serve the public. Our lobby traffic is way down, and we're taking measures to, you know, wipe things down, door handles, you know, just about everything throughout the day. We're taking, you know, but who knows who we've come in contact with out in the world? And social distancing is important. This is the only place we're conducting meetings, and this is how we're conducting them. And folks calling in, and we're using that screen. So hats off to Public Works, got a cable running down the wall there because we never wired these for video of this nature, and that, you know, you can see how much better that screen is over this one. And then later on, we'll run a permanent cable that doesn't go across the floor and down the wall, but, and I don't know why we were getting so much, I think it's the recording equipment, so, because it worked very well for us at, for our directors meeting, for those that were on the, on the screen. So we'll continue to, I guess, evolve in this technology here. So, questions for me? Anybody online?
I'm trying to remember, are our sales tax revenues, are those a one-month or a two-month delay?
I think it's 60 days typically.
It's a two-month delay, so impacts for February, we wouldn't know till the end of April, and impacts for March, we won't know until the end of May. So it'll be a while before we know the financial repercussions initially for this.
Yeah, I'm already receiving.
This tax is gonna be down.
Yeah.
Is it only two months? I thought it was three months. It's the month it collected and then two months after that, so we won't see the impact of what's going on for March until June.
Okay, okay, it's three months. I was thinking it was two months. Okay.
Yeah, we're just gonna watch, watch our spending. Watch, I mean, I, I, you know, I've received a number of emails from businesspeople today, and I wish I had more answers for them, and I don't. And I'm, you know, there's, the information was released today, it's on our website for the federal aid for small businesses and the Small Business Administration, it is loans, but there is some aid out there, and there's, you know, there's more come, you know, it doesn't do any good to speculate, you know. I emailed a graphic to you all today that showed, check your email, we're at the beginning of this. We're definitely at the beginning of it, and so be safe and stay healthy.
I don't know if you generally offer commendations to businesses, but you probably read that Major Land Lord on Bay Street has waived at least a month of rent, and I think that's a nice gesture.
Yeah. What, if you didn't hear that online, Councilmember Chang was referring to, it was in the Port Orchard Independent reported today, that Monsieur Sandepoor, who owns about 60% of the debt retail downtown, waived a month's rent to all his tenants. And I heard from Councilmember Clausen, who is the executive director for Transit, at our board meeting today, talking about potential concessions we may have to make, because Transit owns a building and has tenants in it, and some of those are retail. And I think those conversations are, many landlords are talking about that, and I hope many more talk about it, because we need those businesses to, you know, provide revenue so that we can provide services to our citizens. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Chang. Others, comments online? Okay, adjourn this meeting. In all likelihood, we are meeting electronically next week, unless you choose to be here. So, meeting is adjourned.